Ladies and gentlemen, would you please stand? Join Councilwoman Patchett in the salute pledge to our flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Remain standing for our prayer, please.
Lord Jesus, you're good. And God, we can look across the street to our neighbors. We can look into our own hearts. And we can look around the world and know that this world is a broken place. Who needs a Savior? Who needs a King? God, so it's no small thing, God, that we are a city who invites your presence to his council meeting, Father God. So, Lord, I pray that tonight and every day, Lord, you'd anoint these leaders, God, with your presence. Lord, you'd make your presence known in their lives and in this meeting. God, that your truth would be spoken. God, that, Lord, your, the decisions that are in line with your will would be made. God, I pray that you would just be honored in this meeting tonight. It's in the powerful name of Jesus we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor Chen. I call to order our Guthrie Public Works Authority Meeting of March 3rd. Second item on the agenda is public comments, community announcements, and recognitions. We are in the presence of state champions here. And some of you, many of you probably already know, but we'd like to spend a little moment of time in this recognition of the YMCA state champions. And to do that, start off, I'd like to introduce the Guthrie Coach of the Year, Chris Evans. And would you tell us a little bit about the state champions that we have in our midst? The student athletes that are here?
Yes. Thank you, Mayor, Council. Very excited to bring you seven young men. Started the season practicing in November, started games in December. And we were able to win all 19 games that we played this year. We won the St. Mary's Hoops Classic Tournament. We won our league tournament. And we also won the state championship, state tournament through the YMCA just a few weeks ago. And they, they worked so hard together. It's kind of a cliche to say they worked, they played as a team, but they really are a true team. And each, each player brought something that we desperately need. Only seven players, so we had to be in shape. And so, we exhibit that. We sometimes had to play four games in one day in the conference tournament, or state tournament, excuse me. And so, they were worn out by that time. But great kids, great parents, great grandparents as well. And they got a great support staff. And, you know, they are great athletes, but they're also great students, A's and B's. I think everybody on the team. So, just well-rounded athletes and even better young men off, off the basketball court. So, I think Guthrie and Logan County should be really proud of these guys. And also, I want to thank Lindsay with the YMCA. She is a superstar in the YMCA ranks. And Guthrie continues to get better and better at the Y. And so, we glad to be a part of it.
Good.
Good job.
Good. So, can you introduce these young men?
Absolutely. If you guys want to come up here real quick, we'll get you introduced.
Oh, good, they got the medallions.
We got seven of them. We got some height, we got some speed.
Awesome.
First here, we got Lance Evans. He's got a great mom. Very athletic mom. Daylon Rice, he's our post player, is a great rebounder. Aiden Potter, another great rebounder and got better and better every single week. So, proud of him. Next to him is Colson Smadley. He can, he can rebound, he can be a forward, he can be a center, he can be a guard, he can do whatever you ask him to do. He usually guards the other team's best player at times as well. Next to him is Jack Todd. Jack Todd can shoot the basketball, and he came through several times for us. Next is Jackson Mayer, speedy little guy. And he continued to get better and better every single day. And he also had to cover some of our best defense, or best offensive players as well. And then Court Sumrall, he is a, one of our, he is our top shooter and loves to shoot the basketball. He tells, tells me, wakes up at seven o'clock every morning, no matter what happens. And he stayed the night at the house the other night. And he woke up at seven o'clock, and he was outside playing basketball before I even woke up. So, he loves to give him a basketball again. Just a great group of kids that love basketball and good friends as well, not only on the court, but off the court. And so, again, really, really proud of these guys for their achievements on the floor, but I can't brag enough what they do off the floor as well.
All right. Congratulations.
We thank you for spending a little bit of time with them and being able to recognize them. I think they definitely deserved it after a 19-0 season.
Well, there's one thing, young man, Councilman Bothroyd said that he would challenge any of you to a free throw showing.
Hey!
And all of our money is on you guys. And by the way, Coach of the Year, happy birthday.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We also have, I also have a request here. Heather Ashford? Heather? You want to come and identify yourself, your address, and tell us a little bit about, you say you want to request a tethering, short-term dog tethering?
Long-term.
That's what you want to talk about?
Yeah.
Okay?
Okay.
Good. You've got a few minutes.
All right. Good evening. Guthrie City Council members, my name is Heather Ashford. I live at 4501 Valley View Lane, South Guthrie, Alsooner Road. Like you said, I'm wanting to place an ordinance to stop long-term tethering of dogs. Long-term tethering or unsupervised tethering can be dangerous and is the most overlooked form of animal abuse. The U.S. Department of Agriculture states enforcing the Animal Welfare Act has led us to conclude that the continuous confinement of dogs by a tether is inhumane. A tether significantly restricts a dog's movement. A tether can also become tangled around or hooked on the dog's shelter structure or other objects, further restricting the dog's movement and potentially causing injury. Many owners who keep their dogs tethered outside don't realize the harm they are causing their dogs psychologically. Dogs are naturally social creatures. By separating them from their human companions and other dogs can lead to aggression, anxiety, and depression. The American Veterinary Medical Association stated, "Never tether or chain your dog because this can contribute to aggressive behavior. Because of this neurotic behavior, they rarely receive affection or play from their owners, making it easy for them to just be ignored over time. A dog that is tethered cannot escape from uncomfortable or dangerous situations, making them extremely vulnerable to harassment and attacks from other animals and humans. Long-term tethering is also harmful to their physical well-being as well. One of the more common ones is the raw neck. The rubbing of the collar against the skin can cause burns and injury to the dog. If the dog has a prong collar, it can cause puncture wounds, and if not treated, can lead to infection. They often don't have proper shelter from outside elements. A doghouse doesn't prevent a dog from freezing if it doesn't have proper bedding and insulation. In extreme heat, they are at high risk of having a heat stroke or getting sunburn. Left unattended, they are likely to turn over their water bowls, making it impossible to have access to clean water. Long-haired dogs that are tethered are at risk of becoming matted. Mats are very difficult to detangle and usually have to be shaved off completely. Matted hair can be very painful and cause hematomas to the ears and pull at the skin causing bruising. Matting also hides underlying problems that could be present, such as skin problems and injuries. Ensect bites and parasites are also threats to tethered dog's health. Mosquito bites can cause heartworm disease in dogs, and it is difficult to see the early signs of heartworm if a dog does not have regular human interaction. If it is not diagnosed and treated by a vet, it can lead to death. A dog that is tethered will usually have an unhygienic or contaminated living space. Since they cannot roam, roam, their feces is in the same area that they eat, sleep, and walk. This can attract several different species of mites that can carry the highly contagious skin disease known as mange. According to the Association of Shelter Veterinarians Guidelines of Standards of Care in Animal Shelters, tethering is an unacceptable method of confinement for any animal and has no place in humane sheltering. Constant tethering of dogs is, in lieu of primary enclosure, is not a humane practice. If it is considered inhumane in shelters, I feel it would also be considered inhumane at a public, at a person's residence. Being a dog groomer, I have firsthand seen what long-term tethering can do to a dog. One was severely infected injury from a prong collar that had been used on a pulley tethering system. I have also groomed dogs that were so matted they had lost mobility due to the pulling of the mats on their body. One of the dogs that I actually have was a rescue from a long-term tethering case. She had a shelter and food, but she still didn't have what she needed to actually have a healthy and complete life. When she was finally rescued, she was suffering from mange and extreme sunburn. She had no hair on her face and very little on the rest of her body. She was in such poor health, I wasn't allowed to take her home for the first week after adopting her. If there had been a tethering law in place, the neglect and pain she endured could have been avoided. But because chaining is legal, there is little officers can do to help before it becomes a cruelty case. And oftentimes, it's too late for the dog. A chaining law could not only save dogs, but also give officers a toll to crack down on illegal dog fighting, since most fighting dogs are kept chained. By making long-term tethering illegal, it would help stop one of the most preventable forms of animal neglect and abuse. To enforce this ordinance, I would suggest that tethering should only be done for short periods of time. Set up specific times during the day that they could tether their dogs, say like 6:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. or what have you. Dogs cannot be left outside overnight on a tether. Dogs cannot be left out in the weather that is below 30 degrees or higher than 90. Once again, whichever, set whatever works best. Way to enforce it, violators of ordinance would be ticketed and done so on a call-in basis. Thank you very much for taking the time to listen to me. And I'm, you know, thank you for reading my emails I sent you as well. So, thank you so much for letting me speak.
Okay. All right. Very good. Thank you.
I got a question.
I was going to ask one too. So, go ahead.
Go right ahead.
I just wondered, do you have a lot of this in your neighborhood and have other people been concerned as you are?
I, yes, I do live next to someone who has about three dogs chained up outside 24/7. And if it's snowing, they're out there, they're always out there. And I've seen them have, and all they have is blankets, and that's it. And they usually pull them out, and they're on the ground, so I don't see how that's going to keep them warm. I also, other places I've lived in other towns and cities, they, same thing. I've lived next to dogs that have been tethered outside 24/7. I've seen it multiple times. So...
And have a... Don't mean to interrupt. If you want to add this to an agenda item next time, we can, but it's not an agenda item tonight.
Yeah, we're not supposed to discuss this.
Oh, I'm sorry.
You can make comments in your council comments.
Can't we ask for staff to write something up and bring it back to the future meeting?
When we get to your comments.
At the end.
Thank you so much.
Heather, thank you so much.
And I apologize.
Can I still ask Bothroyd if he was tethered as a child?
Temporarily.
No. Okay. We have, third item on our agenda is our consent agenda, which is the approval of the minutes of the Public Works Authority Meeting of February 18th. Have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
A motion and a second, any discussion? Submit your votes.
All votes are in.
See the votes. Unanimous approval of the consent agenda item A, Public Works Authority Meeting of February 18th. That being the last item on our Public Works Authority Agenda, we are adjourned. And I call to order our city council meeting of March 3rd. Second item on our agenda, consent agenda items A and B. A is the approval of the minutes of the special city council workshop on February 18th. And B is the approval of the minutes of our regular city council meeting of February 18th. I'll entertain a motion.
Second.
And a second. Submit your votes.
All votes are in.
See the votes. Unanimous approval of consent agenda items A and B. Item number three is discussion possible action to approve resolution 2020-1, declaring certain structures dilapidated and dangerous structures detrimental to health and safety. Staff comments first. All yours.
I have the entire presentation from the hearing here available for questions and comments. If you'd like, I'd run through the each house one at a time. What we did was we separated resolution 2020-01 into two resolutions. 2020-01 are the houses that didn't have anybody here to contest the declaration of them being declared dangerous and dilapidated.
Mayor, do we have to go through all this again?
No.
No, I think we'll just highlight whatever he thinks needs to be brought to us is what I'd like to see done.
Well, the first group, there's no question.
Well, I, I've had an inquiry from a citizen that's interested in purchasing two of those properties.
As I have.
We can't sell those properties.
I'm sorry?
We can't sell those.
No, not from us. He's, he's saying he's trying to buy them from the present owners and has a plan to rehabilitate those two properties. That's on 413 South Third, 415 South Third.
I thought it was 414 and 415.
14 and 15?
Yeah. So, let me ask a question, Bill, and I don't mean to jump in here. So, but just, have you talked to Anthony Robinette and Carla Meredith or Naomi Tautmire?
I have not talked to them.
So, if we go ahead and condemn these, then the city is going to go in and fund the destruction of these buildings?
If they do not...
Do it themselves.
Do it themselves. Right. And so, we notified the property owner of record by mail, as were required to by law. One of those letters came back, the other did not. So, we've also posted the house, which I'm assuming, however, whoever's seen these...
Whoever's maintaining it ought to be coming by to see that.
No, whoever wants to buy it.
Right. Whoever wants to buy it has probably seen the posts on the house. But...
And these are right across the street from one another, these two properties?
They are.
In question. I'm just saying, there's, there's, there's been an inquiry by, by a private citizen who's trying to buy them with the intent of rehab.
So, is there a potential to take those two off on South Third, off, I mean, on Third Street off the list for a couple-week period?
Well, I mean, you can, if you want to take them off the list, you can take them off the list.
Why would you take them off the list?
Just for a couple weeks to get, let these people see if they can get ahold of the owners to buy the properties.
But they could still buy them and then work with the city.
Well, that's what I didn't know. I guess that's true.
They're not going to go down immediately.
Just a minute. And Leroy? Comment?
The way it normally works is if the city council adopts this resolution, then we file this resolution, it becomes a lien in case we have to tear it down, because we don't want somebody to sell it in the middle of the process. They have 30 days to take action. In that 30 days, if they come up with a plan, we could always extend them. And what we require is they make substantial progress over 30 days.
That was the reason I was asking if we should take it off to give them that chance.
If a new owner comes for it and shows they purchased it...
Right.
We would work with that new owner, just like the former owner, and keep the city council aware of the extensions we're giving them. The only disadvantage is if you adopt this and we file this, it becomes part of the property record. If the individual is going to get a bank loan instead of financing himself, it does make it more difficult to get a bank loan on a piece of property that has a condemnation against it. That's the only downside.
Are the ones on Third in the flood zone?
One of those properties is definitely in the flood zone.
There's actually three on Third Street. But I noticed there's only two on this.
There were only two that weren't contested.
Oh, here's the other ones over here.
14 and 15 though. One of the two is for sure?
Yes. Well...
They're all going to be in the flood zone.
414 South Third is on the cusp of being in the flood zone.
And, and let me read you this on, on the flood zone, because we went researching. Substantial improvement, any reconstruction, rehab, addition, or other improvement of a structure, the cost of which equals or exceeds 50% of the market value of the structure before starting construction of the improvement. This includes structures that have incurred substantial damage regardless of the actual repair or work performed. There is an exception. Any project for improvement of a structure to correct existing violations of the state or local health sanitary safety code specifications, which have been identified by the local code enforcement official. So, they would be allowed some leniency in rehabbing these because they are bringing it up to address a code violations been identified, even though it may be more than 50%. Now, they would, if, if there's non-conforming issues, like the lots too small, the setback, they would have to go to the Board of Adjustments and get variances to address those non-conforming issues, but they would have a potential to do that.
So, what do you think we should do? Go ahead and condemn them, and that gives them the opportunity? Do we take these off the list?
I think, I think the best way is so you don't have to come back. You, you've got it on the clock. They, they have to make progress over 30 days. If they're serious about it, if you adopt this, as long as they bring a plan in that's reasonable, that you all are agreeable to, they still have adequate time to rehab the house, and then we release the lien.
So, the only negative would be the financing part.
If they go get a bank loan, that could be...
For, for future knowledge for me, so, it, once someone brings one of these up to standard and rehabs it, does the condemnation stick with that property forever? Or does it go away?
It, it would be released, but it would be part of the permanent record of the property.
But it would be released, just like your mortgage. Mortgage is always a permanent pressure of the property, but you have a mortgage release that releases it.
Go ahead.
I'd like to make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Okay, any other discussion? Okay, we're then voting on approving resolution 2020-1, declaring all of those properties as dilapidated dangerous structures. What is your, what, I don't have any form that you wanted to speak, sir?
These are, it's not...
Are you West College?
His is, his is...
Okay. All right. All right. So, we have, we have a motion and a sec to approve that resolution. Any other discussion? Submit your votes.
All votes are in.
See the votes. Unanimous approval to approve resolution 2020-1. Item number four, discussion possible action to approve resolution 2020-2, certain, declaring certain structures as dilapidated and dangerous structures detrimental to health, safety, and welfare of the general public. This, I have, I do have a request here. Ms. Anita, after we have the presentation here, you'll be able to speak to this. And then, sir, I don't have, I don't have anything from you, but you'll be able to speak then too. Yes, sir? Go ahead.
Okay. Resolution 2020-02 is the structures that had somebody here to contest the hearing, at the hearing, last council meeting. 413 East Villas is one of those. The owner's present here tonight. And then 502 South Third, he had brought up that there was active electric at this one at the hearing, and he was right. I'd gotten the gas and electric numbers reversed on this address.
And while we're on that one, because it is a garage under non-conforming structures...
Doesn't have a house to go with it.
The house was in front of that, and it's, it's gone, or some of it's in a pile there.
A building or structure or portion thereof which is non-conforming as a use which is or hereafter becomes vacant or remains unoccupied for a continuous period of one year shall not thereafter be occupied except by use which conforms to the use regulations the district sits in. And our codes require you to have a residential structure if you're going to have an auxiliary building on the property. If the house burned or something, and the garage was still in good shape and being used, it would be grandfathered. But once it has been vacant for a year, that goes away. They cannot prepare this, this structure on this property unless they want to come in and also add a residential structure based on our code.
So, that's going down.
So, they can turn that into a residential structure.
Well, I was, I thought the last meeting, he said the neighbor was buying it.
Buying the property.
So, there is a house next door. So, if you combine those two lots, technically speaking, then there would be a house with it. If that neighbor's not buying it, then it has to go.
No, that's a garage.
No, this wasn't a house, this was a garage.
Yeah. And that could still happen in this process.
But I'm, I don't even know, we don't even know if the neighbor is truly interested. He just said the neighbor was.
But, but if it doesn't, but it does, if it doesn't happen, then we move forward with our process.
Yes.
So, has everybody that, well, go ahead with your presentation, then I'll ask it. Okay. This is 503 South Third. They came in and expressed before the meeting last time that they would, they're interested in remodeling this house. We still recommend that it be declared as dangerous and dilapidated to facilitate that process.
You said they, was it the owner or a prospective buyer?
It was an owner that came in. 511 South Third, they called and hoped that it doesn't get declared dangerous and dilapidated, but they don't really have a plan, haven't presented a plan. Here's 807 West College. Again, that owner's here tonight. And then 916 West Logan, we actually heard from this property owner today, and he was inquiring about taking out a demo permit for it. I do believe the original talks were to restore the house, but I think he's looked at it and come to the conclusion that a demo permit for this one's the best way to go.
This is the one that he wanted to die in the house, wasn't it?
That is.
His dad wanted to, I think.
Yeah. 1015 West Logan, that owner's here representing tonight for this property. She has been in our office several times. She's in the process of working on getting her building permit.
Is that house occupied as well?
I don't believe it is occupied at the time. 1111 West Noble, this owner came in after the hearing and came in with a local contractor, and they're working on putting some plans together to get permits on this house as well. And then 1115 West Washington, they were here at the hearing, but we haven't heard from them since the hearing.
And, and even if we go ahead and approve these, again, if they're, if they make reasonable substantial progress, that's going to, you know...
Well, with the exception of some that are in the flood zone, there's another whole issue that has to be dealt with to bring it up to code.
But as Leroy said, there's some, that's what he read while...
They've got some leeway. They may have to get some variances from the Board of Adjustments on some things, but they could be...
But they do have to go through, they can't just do it, is what I'm saying, yeah.
They don't have to elevate it above the flood line.
Okay.
They would be wiped from that.
Okay. All right.
So, you're saying that they wouldn't have any...
I've got one more.
I'm sorry, Steve.
Go ahead.
I'm sorry. So, you're saying that there wouldn't be a necessity for them to jack the house up?
Correct.
Okay.
That they could get a variance for it.
Not for that, but if there was like a setback issue or a lot size, those kind of things, they could get a variance. They wouldn't have to get a variance on the flood plain issue. They get that automatically because they are making repairs required by the city to meet code.
Okay. All right.
Okay.
That clarifies that.
You all made me read these codes.
Since we did the hearing last council meeting and were, it was table till tonight, we'll send a notice of findings to all the owners of whatever you come up with tonight.
Well, what is your recommendation on all of this, on this list? We already did the first one.
Well, all of them were my recommendation to begin with.
Right.
So...
So, that hasn't changed any, right?
It has not changed.
So, but just because we condemn, then you have the authority at that point to work with that homeowner or person to get that...
What I would suggest, so that we don't wear you out bringing these back, if somebody comes in and they've got a plan in 90 days to substantially bring the building in, or the structure up to code, and they make progress over 30 days, we would not bring it back to you.
I agree.
If they come in and they've got a plan that's going to take two years or three years, we'll probably want to bring it back to you. Or if they've got a 90-day plan and we get 60 days into it... Or if they've got a 90-day plan and we get 60 days into it and they haven't done anything, we'll probably bring that one back to you.
Why don't we just condemn it, and that doesn't have to come back to us? And then you guys can just move forward with your plan.
I think that's what he was saying.
Oh, I thought he said it would have to come back to us.
No, he doesn't want, he's trying to, he's suggesting that we can avoid that.
Okay, I see, I'm, I'm sorry.
We can avoid that.
All right.
Okay, continue.
So this is 1723 East Springer. Recent picture there. Of course, it's still unsecured.
Okay. All right. Anita, Ms. Anita, you want to talk about your property and the other two? Well, I'll get to you, but you want to come first? Identify yourself and the property that you're talking about. And you spoke to us last council meeting.
Yes.
Move that mic right in front of you, please. Good.
There you go.
Identify, identify yourself and your address.
Anita Navarette, 1015 West Logan Avenue. And I already ordered a Sarvey by certified from Oklahoma Sarvey Company. I should be getting that sometime this week. And not only that, once I get that survey, I'm already getting in touch. It was too much of a work for me to do the planning, so as soon as I get that Sarvey, that certificate, then I'm getting in touch with some architects. So we're an architect to have everything in order.
So someone else is going to do the project for you versus you doing it?
Yeah, because I was told that I could do it myself, but it was, I could, it was too much.
Well, that's good.
But you realize that there is some time constraints here. There's a window that you have to get things done in.
And I did, I spoke with Mike, the inspector, and he suggested to me first get that Sarvey ready, and then I can move forward.
Okay.
With other Sarvey, he says, it's better, it's better for me. So I'm kind of following, also, I'm here today because he told me to be here today. So I'm trying to follow what he's asking me to do.
So you're getting the survey and then with the intent of an architect.
Once I get the certificate, I will bring it to Mike. And then if everything goes well, then I will move on with the next step, getting the plans ready.
All right.
When did you buy this home?
That was in November, sometime in November last year.
November of 19?
Yes.
Okay.
And you understand that if, if we make, if we approve this resolution, that doesn't stop you from doing the things you're doing. You show that progress and.
That's not, that's what got, get me so confused, because Mike told me, stop everything until you have that permit. And he will not give me that permit until I bring that plan.
As long as they are aware of what you are doing and they're, they're convinced that you're making progress.
I could have been doing things there, but I stopped everything because that's what he told me.
I think the confusion is there is a building permit that you need to do some of the structural and utility things. So you can't just go in there and start. That's why you need to back up, get your plan, and then come get your building permit. And we'll take that in the calculation of the plan that you put together.
And that's what I'm doing, I was already. So all my material is there, concrete, wood, everything is just waiting there for me, even my tools.
If you work with the planning department, and then once you get started, make substantial progress every 30 days, the city will work with you.
All right.
Anybody else have any questions of Ms. Anita here? All right, thank you very much.
I do have a question, but according to all the paperwork that I have here, am I required to build a, because I was planning just to do the whole remodeling, but the architect asked me if, he wants to know if, am I required to build two-car garage? Or as long as I just do the remodeling of the whole house, that's good enough? Because that's, that was my plan, just doing the remodeling.
You're going to have to do more, we can discuss that.
Yeah.
But you do need to get the money, because it's my understanding, and I want to talk to him today, that you were really close on having your plans ready. So you might talk to him.
I will, I will.
All right. You can get with them at the end of the council meeting. Thank you very much. All right, somebody wanted to talk about, is it, what, 413 East Villas? No?
807.
But you're good with the way we.
You understand what we're talking about, and you understand what your responsibilities are. Okay. 807 West College. See, that, both of those are yours. Okay.
One is my mom.
Okay. All right. All right, but you're, you're okay. All right. Any other comments or questions? Okay, I'll entertain a motion then.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Have a motion in a second, any other discussion? Submit your votes.
I'll vote, sir.
See the votes, unanimous approval then to approve resolution 2020-2. Item number five, discussion possible follow-up action on properties that were declared in fiscal year 18 and 19. Staff?
On this one, at the request of Councilman Bothroyd, we sent this report out to all the councilmen, I'm assuming everybody got it.
Yeah.
We'd be glad to answer questions, or we can go through the whole report. And I do think there's a request to discuss the property that was condemned under resolution 2019-11, which is a form of burline property. And, and so at whatever, at times appropriate, we can discuss that one.
Okay.
But we could go through the whole report or just address questions.
Okay, I know it was sent out, everybody received it on council. Any questions of the information? I thought it was good information, appreciated that being shared. Nothing on 18? How about 19? Anything on resolution 19?
Hold on, 19 is the, is the burline deal?
Yeah, no, it's on that one.
1911 is.
Yeah, no, I don't. Any questions on that?
No.
Okay, let's go to 1911 and 13. All right. This, this is the burline property. I think we all received updated information on that, staff?
Again, we've had communications from the individual from the council that bought this property. They indicated that their original plan was to hire a firm to come in and save as much as the break as possible, and then separate it from the wood material. They indicated that they talked to at least two firms and could not get a deal worked out with them. Then they decided to go ahead and contract with someone to just haul it all off into a landfill. The last email I shared with all the council members, I blind copied to everybody, and the owner indicated that they should start this week. We have no contract or anything to document that. So that's kind of where we're at on this, and whatever guidance the city council wants to give us, that's what we'll follow.
Well, we were pretty hard, I don't want to make it difficult for anybody, but we were pretty staunch on the front end of this building getting cleaned up. And, and lo and behold, it sits exactly as it was when we were committed to make sure it got cleaned up. So my opinion of it is going to be, if it's not started this week, to go back to the original deal that we made, which is to get it cleaned up.
What we could do is if it's not started this week, next week, we could issue tickets.
That's what I would recommend.
That's what I'd recommend.
If they haven't started this week, we start ticketing. They've had ample time. They've known the deadlines all along.
You hate to be hard with somebody new coming in, but.
And if you all recommend that tonight, we'll send him an email tomorrow to make sure he's aware that if he doesn't start this week, we'll start writing in tickets.
Sounds good.
The last rec, the, the last deadline was his self, self-deadline. We, we agreed on his deadline, which was further out than, than the one we'd set.
Do we remember how much it was going to cost to rehab this ourselves?
You mean clean it up ourselves? I do not recall.
Yeah, we don't want to go there. Okay. I like the ticket idea.
Oh, I do too. Just looking at what the other options are.
So do we need to make a motion to?
You can just do it, right?
As long as I see us nodding heads, we'll do it.
I think we ought to take that, that would be the next action.
We didn't get little bobbleheads.
Ticketing will be the next action if, if sufficient action isn't taken this week.
We'll send him an email in the morning.
All right. Good. Is that it? Good. All right.
Thanks, Bill.
Time number six, discussion possible action to confirm mayor's nomination, Jill Oakes Tontz to the Planning Commission. There are two applicants for that position, both very good applicants, interviewed. I think that Ms. Tontz's background, legal background, would be of value. She's focused on wanting to be involved with, with community activities. I think she's an excellent candidate, both are excellent candidates. I think she's the better of the, of the two.
Motion to approve.
Second.
The motion in a second, any other discussion? Submit your votes.
I'll vote, sir.
See the votes. Unanimous approval then to confirm Jill Oakes Tontz on the Guthrie Planning Commission. Item number seven, discussion and possible action to confirm nomination of Jeffrey Jordan to the Parks Board. Mr. Jordan is a relatively newcomer to Guthrie, been here about two years, moved from Florida, has, has actively, been actively involved with community activities, both in prior location and, and here, has visited all of our parks, has good perception of, of the importance of parks to our quality of life and, and our, and our vision of where, where we'd like to see Guthrie go. I think he's, he was the only applicant for the Parks Board position at this time.
So move.
Second.
Motion in a second, any other discussion? Submit your votes.
I'll vote, sir.
See the votes, unanimous approval of Mr. Jordan to the Parks Board. Item number eight, city manager report.
We have no additional reports tonight.
Okay, item number nine, comments by city council, Councilman Bothroyd.
Councilman Bothroyd, well, we, I've wished Chris's happy birthday. He does a lot for the community and for us. I want to talk a little bit about mineral wells. There was a historical preservation meeting last night. We have concrete, I guess, going in next week, and I want to voice my opinion of, I'd like to see the, I'd like to see more than one. I would like to see the five back that we originally had in the plan of these gazebos, but that's not realistic right now, so I'd like to see the one near the pavilion moved to the other side of the pond. That's all I got.
Okay. Councilwoman Pageant.
I guess we had some birthday people today, and I think that the, the team that Chris coached has done a great job. I would also like to voice my opinion on mineral wells. I think working with the HPC in all aspects of the historical preservation is extremely important and, as far as I'm concerned, required. We don't want to be not accepted for any future historic grants, and that's probably one of the basic requirements. I too would like to see a gazebo on the other side of the pond, but mine's for a different reason. I think that older people like myself need a quiet place to go read or visit or talk with people where there aren't children. And we've made, you know, we've done a great job of planning for the children and providing places, benches and places for the parents or guardians to sit. So I would like to see that moved and possibly consider staining and stamping the concrete.
So does that mean you don't like children? I'm just kidding.
I've got a great granddaughter, and I would love to.
I'm teasing.
We provide a lot of things for our children, and we've, aren't providing very many outdoor places to enjoy what we've got here for.
Well, you could have a reunion and not have to be with the kids, that's really the bottom line.
Councilman Channel.
Two things. I'd like to ask staff to draw us up some sort of a provoke, proposed ordinance about tethering. You know, I, I think that's a, was a good subject, and I think we should have done a long time ago. I don't know why, but sometimes it just gets overlooked, so if you guys could do that. And my opinion on the pavilions, I'd like to, one, the original one there and one on the point, but since that's not, doesn't look to be in the works, let's take their recommendation and put it to bed and not have to talk about it anymore.
Councilman Taylor.
Thank you, staff. I know you guys had to work hard on this, on the housing, and I know it's tough. I mean, I hate to tell somebody you're out of your house. You know, you may have grown up in there or you may not have, and so I think it's a tough decision, but I think it's, it's got to be done, so I appreciate you all doing that. Chief, glad to have you back. I know you had back problems, and I hope that you get over this, that's for you that. I too would like to complain, I guess, or talk about the moving one of the gazebos across over on the other side of the park area. But otherwise, I, you know, the stamping, if they want to do that, I think that's okay too, as long as it meets the ADA deal, and we don't have any problem with him, and I don't think we will. I think Tenny knows what he's doing on that, so I too would vote on that way.
Well, let's do bring up, though, real quickly, and I don't mean to, I know I already have my comments. Don't we have the stamping machine? I forgot to.
Yes, we do.
Yes, we do.
Yes, we do.
And so the relative cost to that is minimal to none? Is that correct?
I wouldn't say that.
What, what we will do is we're meeting with the engineer tomorrow, and we will make sure that the one we're moving across is flagged where they want it, so that we're not 15 feet off or 30 feet off. They can flag it. The sidewalk that connected to that particular pavilion, most people refer to it as the middle one, we will look at moving that sidewalk, so the contractor will have the same quantities of concrete.
To the other side.
To the other side, and what we're going to look at is to start at the bathroom, and there's a little walkway, and take it over, and if need to, look at a change order to take it all the way to the pavilion.
Can they, would it make sense for them to do a pad for a secondary pavilion at that point while they're out there pouring?
I don't mean to interrupt this, but I think we're getting off, off topic on.
Okay.
All right, Mayor.
Mayor, I want to, real quick, deal. Also want to make mention of Robbie Hudson, who's had a bad accident this last week. Rob's my best friend growing up, and so I'm, I think the council here, we'll probably all agree with that, so I hope he has a speedy recovery back on that.
But one clarification on Councilman Taylor's. All the houses we did on this are vacant structures. So we're not.
Yeah, I know, I know you are, and I, and I'm not, and I'm not backing, I agree.
I understand, but you said that we were making the old yard.
Well, you know, I understand. My mistake.
Vice Mayor Kess.
First off, I, Don, I agree with that. I think we should look into the tethering thing and try to see what we can do about that. It does seem to me cruel as well. And a little bit behind the times, I think. But that, I, the gazebo I would like to see moved, simply because that's what they recommended. And I think that's it.
Councilman Long.
I'd like to thank Dan and his team for all the hard work they did. I know that they probably deal with a lot of public that are, are temperamental and, and including myself in that. I'm probably not the easiest person to get along with or deal with sometime. And in saying that, I want to, I reach out and appreciate everything Leroy's doing. Obviously, he's heard from all of us in regards to the park, and, and I think, more than anything, I think Leroy. uh, more than anything, I think Leroy's just ready to build the park, and I think we're all ready to just build the park and be done, but I think we all have our opinions on what it should look like, and that's a hard, um, that's a hard line to cross, and I know it is, and I know we've all went back and forth on what we've approved and then what's, what's there. So I appreciate you being willing to still work with us, uh, so I, I thank, I thank you there. Um, but I, I, I'm going to go ahead and say my piece with it too, I do think we should take the Historic Preservation's recommendation on, uh, moving that, uh, across there, but I do want to, uh, thank you guys for all your work. I want to appreciate you coming too to talk about the lease law. I mean, this takes a good amount of time out of your, your evening to come up here and about something, uh, that you're passionate about, and I think that's amazing that people are still willing to take their time and, and speak out and, and try to, um, do that. So thank you for that, and thank you for the people that actually came to represent their properties. Uh, I wish that each property had somebody to represent them. I wish we were having to tear them all down and, and people were, uh, rehabbing them, because I know there's a lot of people wanting to do that, but I also want this city cleaned up, so I'll be glad to see a lot of them torn down, so. I appreciate, uh, Bill, all your efforts in making sure we help clean up the city.
Not an easy job, for sure. Um, uh, I'm sorry, did, was that it?
Yes, I'm done, thank you.
Um, I would, I, I'd like, I like the stamp concrete, uh, idea, uh, and from what I have seen, what it will look like, I think it will be, um, obviously visually very attractive, uh, and, um, and I think, uh, not, not be any kind of a barrier for people in wheelchairs, uh, walkers, uh, strollers, whatever. Uh, I, I, you know, our, the plan all along was to put a gazebo over on the, on the southwest side, uh, in the next phase, we're jumping that phase, um, and I, I agree with that. Heather, thank you for bringing up, uh, the, uh, the, the idea on the tethering, the issue on the tethering, and I'm sure staff will come up with an appropriate ordinance to present to us on that regard. I'd like to remind, uh, those that are viewing, um, we have census, there's going to be a lot of focus on census, uh, over the next few months, uh, and it is really, really important, uh, for everybody, but especially in small towns in, uh, across this country, because the census numbers drive so much in terms of federal monies, uh, that are available to communities. And so it is really, really critical that we get, uh, accurate information, uh, and everybody fill out that census, uh, uh, information when it comes to you. So you're going to hear, hear that from me and probably others, um, uh, from this, uh, from this council, uh, over the course of the next few weeks, but please pay attention to that information, uh, and, uh, when you have the opportunity, fill out the census forms. With that, ladies and gentlemen, adjourned.